Okay, hello everybody. This is Sustainable Bethel Commission. Today is October 19th and we're starting at 7:23 PM. A little late, we have some technical difficulties and we apologize. We do have a forum. So let's get started with the agenda. I guess we all have to pledge allegiance to the flag. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, one nation for God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Okay, so, um, thank you. Once I introduce Donna Cantish, she is our new recording secretary, hired by the town and assigned to Sustainable Bethel to help us with all of our administrative needs at this point and hopefully more as we get advanced some initiatives. So welcome Donna.
Welcome Donna.
Welcome.
Donna's first day was 20 minutes of technical difficulties. So welcome to that. So if you can get through that, you can just get better from here for sure. So have you all looked at the minutes from the last meeting, which was on August 4th? And do I have a motion for approval on the minutes? Will you be able to group?
Second.
On favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, it's easy. All right, so I'll do my, um, I don't know. What I'd like to do actually for my chairman comments, and I, this is a special meeting, but I am going to move consideration of approval of our schedule to the way it works in municipal government. This is considered a special meeting because we had already approved an annual meeting time for Sustainable Bethel when we met in May. And that was largely due to when, um, everybody was available. And so we've changed that. And so today it's off the beaten path. It's, it's, it's not that first Thursday of the month. It's the third Wednesday of-
Yeah, it works.
Hey Bill, you made it.
Yeah, yeah, finally.
Yay!
I gave it, I gave it to Bernie too, so he-
Sorry about those technical difficulties, but you're good because you're not, you guys are not in the end until number eight. So you're good, you didn't miss anything.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, Bernie should be joining shortly, Bernie and Deb.
Well, I'm glad we got all that so.
Yeah, thanks, thank you.
Oh, absolutely. So what we have to do is we have to set another schedule for the remainder of the year and if, and going into next year, because we will have to, this will have to then get recorded with the town clerk. So, um, the agenda item is consideration of approvals, Sustainable Bethel Commission meeting schedule, third Wednesday of every month, Bethel Town Hall, Conference Room B, 7 PM. Scheduled below for the remainder of 22, 2022 and 2023. Now, if we need to have a special meeting or we need to make changes, we will have to notice per, you know, the requirements. But, so do I have a motion to approve the new schedule? Motion to approve. Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Awesome. So we got all our business stuff on, right? All right, so I have some chairman remarks. And as you know, I typically go on my little iPad. Unfortunately, something happened with my cloud. So, good thing I printed it out because I would never remember. I would just ramble and I don't want to do that. So we haven't met for two months. We had a little hiatus, which actually was a good thing. I like to look at these things and changes as opportunities, not something that is, you know, again, opportunity to try to look at things, how we can advance our mission or goals. It was time to, for me, it was kind of a time to reassess and to reimagine what this means for us, what this means for the town, what this means for the region. And I looked at this saying, okay, so we can take a step back and we're kind of in this transition phase right now where we want to build relationships, we want to partner, we want to collaborate. And we want to be advisory to the town and also create new initiatives through those partnerships. So since we met in August, the leadership and, or the leadership and organizational changes in the town of Bethel, as you know, Dion left who was the executive assistant, and Matt Nickerbacher, who was the first selectman, he took a job in the town of Wilton as a town manager. And what happened was, and I'm being very simple here, Rich Straighton, who was the second selectman, he then became the interim selectman until a special election. So the way it works in municipal government, he's only there until a special election. Because Matt left when he did, there needs to be a special election. That is not going to hap- and there's a process. Noticing in a number of days and when all of this happens, according to the Secretary of State. That's not going to happen until the end of January. And so the town has to follow those procedures for this type of an election. So during, between now and then, it makes sense for us to, we're going to continue to meet, we're going to continue to advance our mission and our, our goals. But we're going to, again, do this slowly. We're going to build our relationships and then we can start ramping up in 2023. And we'll talk about that later. I met with Beth Kavagnia and Janice over the summer. And as you all know, the town has accomplished quite a bit in terms of sustainability. And I invited them to attend the meeting in December so we can chat with them. We had questions about the budget, about the bottle bill. And I had met with Matt Nickerbacher before he left about what that, how, what that means. There's about $7,500 there in that budget right now. They're anticipating probably a little, right around $15,000 by the end of the year, I believe. But those do come with restrictions. So I met with the executive director of the Housatonic Resource Recovery Authority. Her name is Jennifer Heaton-Jones. And it does have to relate, it does relate to materials management, solid waste and to recycling, which is fine because that ties into Sustainable Connecticut. There are, there is a category related to that specifically. And she was pretty excited to have, that Bethel has a commission like this. So we'll be working with her and partnering with her, with her group, which is the Housatonic Resource Recovery Authority. They're, they're in charge of the region's materials management, solid waste and recycling. Commissioner activity, you all know that Ryan Arconti and Stephen Nipolito resigned. But like all municipalities, the, to get to be, to have the selectmen, appoint someone to fill those spots is a process also. And my gut is telling me that, given that we're in a transition to a special election, it's probably not going to happen till after then. But because we are a commission of 10, we need a quorum of six. We're going to always need that quorum unless the structure changes. And that would have to get approved by the board of selection. That's where we're at with that. Over the summer, or I think Diana, what was it? The summer or in August, I don't remember. We sent out an email to all of the volunteers who had submitted to be on this commission, but were not selected. And we got a really good response. So we're going to continue, we're going to definitely continue to engage them as we move forward with what's going on right now. And Diana has volunteered to help with that. And I thank Peter Schwartz for helping to put together the elevator pitch. It was a short, two paragraph, six sentences, but it kind of told-
It's not overstated.
No, but, but thanks.
Although you did edit me down.
I did edit you a lot. Because that's what I do. But thank you for, yeah, I usually need something to edit so before I get started. But you, but thank you for doing that. That definitely is a start and kind of consolidated what this commission is about. So that was very helpful. As administratively, Donna is here to help with the minutes, the agenda. We're going to talk about how to access the Google Drive. Sean's been really helpful with that, as well as the communication component of that. And we'll talk about that later. We had sent you the survey results over the summer. I would like to continue to post those so we can talk about, you know, maybe, you know, there's a conversation between Donna and Sean about continuing to engage the public with the survey because why not, it's good to have that data. Again, the communication, Sean, not only the, the digital component of it, but there, there are news outlets that are digital and some are print. Like Hello Bethel, Bethel Hamlet, Bethel Advocate, Danbury News Times. We don't have a lot to do right now. There's not a lot to report, but we would want to have those relationships when the time comes. Katie did a really great job in drafting the bylaws, which we'll talk about later in the agenda. And I'd like everybody to take a look at that and give their comments. And if possible, would love to be able to approve those next month because that's going to be helpful to all of us in how we run our meetings. I mean, there's things in there like if you miss meetings and et cetera, and how we all conduct our business. So that's really important. Talk about a strategic plan. I will draft something up. I've been through that several times in my career. That's going to be really important. The Sustainable Bethel Commission is kind of like a startup business or department or agency. So it's not like an organization that's been around for 10, 20 years and now we're also going to start change direction. No, we're brand new. So I'm looking at this as, okay, these, I'm making this up. These are the five things that we want to accomplish in 2023. This is the schedule, these are the responsibilities, and that's going to be our guide for 2023. And that's what we've reported out to the selectmen and that will be used for press releases and all that kind of stuff. So I will put something together. I'm going to send it out to everybody for comment. And we really need to get that approved here internally by the end of the year. So that would be at our December meeting at the latest so we can start a clean slate in January for 2023. And then we have a guide. And that can be flexible, but at least we have these five or six, whatever we decide. These are the things that we want to accomplish in 2023. And this is how, this is the timeframe that we're going to do that. During this time between October and the first quarter of 2023, we're going to have guest speakers, which we all talked about. Tonight we have the Heat Smart Pace Group as a partner. And the guest speakers is mostly about collaboration and partnership. As you all know, we're volunteering, we're working commission, but we cannot do everything ourselves. Not only from the time point of view, but from a funding point of view. And so we're going to accomplish what we have to accomplish through partnerships. The Bethel Land Trust reached out to me and they also want to partner with us. There's a lot that they do related to our major, main priority of getting the certification, things like the open space. One of the other things that they brought up, not necessarily related to the Land Trust, but there are board members on the Land Trust that are really interested in the growing spaces, which you all talked about when we first met. So that will be a really great partnership to have for us. The other, I talked about it before, was the H R, the Housatonic Resource Recovery Authority. They're going to be an excellent department to have because they are, they have funding, they have grants, and they want cities and towns across the state, well, within their region, their Housatonic region, to participate with their, their initiatives. I also reached out to the superintendent of schools. I'm meeting with her next week. We talked about, that was another priority for the commission to engage the board of ed in different ways. And she was very happy that I reached out to her. So I'll be meeting with her and see how we can work together with those partnerships. Then talking about Sustainable Connecticut, we're going to hold off until probably, I would say, February to have a kickoff because then we'll have created all these relationships and we'll have a better idea of our strategic plan and all of that. So that's my report. Do you guys have any comments, questions or anything else? It's not all about me, so.
Well, I mean, I, I think we do, but should we keep to the agenda for now? So you have a guest speaker on here?
Yeah, I do. I do.
So do we want to get to them since we're a little behind?
Yeah, I think we get to them. That's my agree. Okay, and we already talked about the, we talked about sustainable Connecticut certification. And just, I put the commissioner reports on that because the goal is to have the commissioners be liaisons with the different partnerships and to report out every month to the, to the commission every month. So we're all engaging that way. So that's going to happen soon. Okay.
Who is the commissioner?
You guys are all commissioners.
Where are we reporting on?
Not, yeah, we don't have that yet. But that, that's something that's going to happen.
It's just commission reports.
Commissioner, yeah. No, it's commission, each commissioner is going to be, he'll be assigned-
Communications for me.
Right, well-
A different sector.
Yeah, well, yeah, whatever the partnership is. We'll figure that out and then, yeah.
Got it.
Yeah. I didn't want to, yeah. So it's basically reporting, we're not, they're not really committees because that enters a whole different municipal type of parameter. Okay, so Bill and team. Okay, does he have, does he have access to share a screen? You can go down to share screen. Right, no, go down to share, the little duda, and then, no, not you. No, 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 you have to, no. No, 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 no.
You have to give Bill permission to share.
So on the, on the little, go down to the share, the little arrow, yeah. Click on the, click on, no, no, not on that one.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. The, the other one, the one next to it, right there. Go multiple participants, click on that. Okay, that's it. Okay, hi. So we have Bill Crady on there and we have Deborah Rowe and Bernie is here too, or, oh Bernie, okay. Hey. All right, so there, here's a guest speaker to give a little presentation. So you have the floor.
Okay, well, yes, I'm Deb and Bernie's somewhere here. I can't see him on my Zoom, but it's good to see all of you. I've met some of you at the shop and stroll. And Sunny, good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Yeah, so I'm just going to share screen. We just have a few slides to share. So let me go ahead and do that. And you can let me know if you can see it okay.
You're on Deb, you did it.
Okay. Bernie knows sometimes I have trouble with this. Of course, I'm using Google Slides instead. Okay, let me see if it'll do, I show view. Okay, there we go. Um, so as you can see, we're, we're saying, titling this Pace and the Sustainable Bethel and ongoing partner, partnering together. So even though we're passing on the Heat Smart campaign to all of you, we do want you to know that, that we're here for you as you work on transitioning Bethel to renewables and that sort of thing. So at the end, we're going to tell you a few of the other projects that we work on with towns so that you know that we're, we're here if, if you want some help. And we're very excited for this new commission. We know you're going to do lots of exciting things and I'm sure you have tons of ideas. And we spoke with Catherine a bit and it just sounds like it'll be wonderful. So some of you might recognize a few people there from the commission, from our shop and stroll efforts. The, the team was great handing out the flyers and all of that. And officially, the Heat Smart program started sunny right way back in November of the previous year. So, and then in January, we got the CPI grant for $10,000 for Bethel. And we just went from there doing different events and mailings and other things. And we're happy to report that we have met the community partnership initiative goal. Bethel was the first town out of all of the towns in the program to reach the, the goal. So that's exciting. We don't want to leave it there. Bernie had a goal of 100 Hess completed Hess services for the, the Heat Smart program. And I wanted 400. So I think you'll definitely hit Bernie's 100 by the end of the year. And that's, that's my, my thought on that. So basically, for those of you who aren't aware, I think most of you are by this time, that the Heat Smart is simply an outreach and education campaign. When Bernie looked around the state, he saw that people weren't very familiar with heat pumps. And as you know, heating and cooling is a huge part of energy consumption, right? For most towns, it's over 40% of all the energy consumed in your town. So you cannot really address greenhouse gas emissions without tackling the building sector. It's hugely important. So Heat Smart was started. And then when they worked with the first town, Bramford, they said, hey, you really should do these Hess campaigns as, make Hess part of the campaign. So that's really the first step. You get your energy audit, then you do your weatherization and then you, then you look into heat pumps. So it's, so a three-step process to kind of decarbonize the building sector. So some of the things we've done to date, we have our heatsmartct.org/bethel website, which you can check out another time. So that is the place where folks have come into the form. And we've directed them to one of our two Hess vendors. And from there, they get their, their service done. And then they'd be guided towards additional weatherization. And if they wanted to look into heat pumps, they could take that step as well. So that was how we did it. And now I think we've switched it over to the 1-800 Y use number so you all don't have to keep checking that. And then we've done various press releases. I have these, this information here so that, you know, you can maybe build off these connections we started to make in the community. But, but you're a big commission. So I'm sure you all have tons of connections within the community. So if you wanted to sit down and do like a power map and think about who's connected to where, you know, you all have your different faith groups, you have your different civic groups. And so those connections could be much greater than we were able to do. So yeah, we did press releases, we've done social media, we did the shop and stroll, we did an energy fair, which some of you attended. We did library programs. We even did a presentation for First Congregational Church. Not very well attended, but, but we did it just the same. And Catherine said that you're all working on the Sustainable CT, which is fantastic because there's money there as well for your town and the recognition. So the Heat Smart campaign aligns with the Sustainable CT goal 7.7. And then to get you started, there's money left over from the grant. So there'll probably be $3,000 or upward by the time we're done invoicing different things. And so it can be used for anything related to this campaign of, of getting more Hess and more heat pumps. You can use the money for print ads. I just sent something to Catherine with the prices for the times in terms of ads, you can use it for social media booths. We really think a great place for, for maybe you to tackle is reaching out to low-income residents. This wasn't something we were able to do a lot of because the first selectman did not want us to reach out to landlords. We don't really know why. But now, and he was very supportive in every other way. But now that he's moved on, you could do this. Reach out to landlords and renters. And the reason I'm saying that is because these programs are hugely helpful to these folks. They get lots of things that, that other people don't get at no cost. So the Hess service is no cost to them. Generally, if they qualify for this program, they will get insulation at no cost to them. If a landlord has individuals that qualify as low income, they get their building basically upgraded for no cost to them. So why wouldn't you do it? So if you can't, and there is a way to reach out to them through the grant list, which I believe Bernie gave to you, or you have. So you can look at the two-family, three-family, four-family. And you could also work with Megan from Social Services and reach out to these people. Initially, she wanted to work with us, but then was told not to. So, so you can think about that. That's just a little history there. Did somebody have a question? I saw, saw, saw something moving.
Thank you, Deborah. But yeah, this also, I'm glad you, I see that you put that in your slides. This will help with the equity piece of Sustainable Connecticut is reaching out to those residents that would normally not have access, right? And that's a big part of the equity component of the certification.
Yeah, it, I think it'd be a really good place to go with this campaign, but that'll, that'll be up to you. So, oh, someone had a question.
You use the term several times, low income. What are the guidelines? What are we talking about?
Yeah, so we actually have the guidelines on the Bethel site, but it goes by the number of people in your household. So basically, if you're a one-person household and it's looking strictly at income, right? It's not looking at like how much money you have in the bank. So maybe you're-
It comes from all sources, such as you would have on a tax form.
No, it's really looking just at income. So like you might have a senior that, a citizen that has a lot of money in the bank, but not a-
Right, that doesn't count.
Yeah, yeah, it, it would count. They're looking just at income.
Oh, so it doesn't count the money in the bank?
Right, the money in the bank doesn't count. That's, that's what we were told. Bernie, you can confirm if you-
It's a, it's a great question and I, I can, I can flash it up. But what Deb is saying is, is income not assets. Some, some sort of benefit structures are asset tested. This is not. And so household size one, like Deb was saying, annual income of $39,027. And if you have eight people living in one domicile, it's up to 103,572, but it's-
Right, increases, yeah.
So it's, there's a, a lot of people who are going to fall, fall into this because they might, they might be retirees and just have a small amount of income, but even if they have substantial retirement assets.
Right, so you, Peter, it's on the website.
Okay, I'll go look.
Yeah, it's on the Heat Smart, the Bethel Heat Smart Pace website.
What I will do is I'll put a link, drop a link into the chat and-
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, it's a good, good question though, because parts of this can be confusing. But the major point is that you all want to tackle greenhouse gas emissions in your community. And just by everybody getting a simple Hess, you can see that would make a big impact. Every single year, you'd be reducing your greenhouse gases by over 5 million pounds if everybody got their Hess based on an average of 1,300 pounds reduction for each household that gets a Hess.
So in other communities, I know this was, didn't happen here related to landlords and renters. Have you reached out to, in other communities landlords and renters related to this program?
Yeah, we just did a mailing in West Hartford to two, three, four-family homes because that's, that's the limit, right? Four families. And then it goes into the multifamily program, which is a different program.
Okay, so you just did that. So you don't know what the response is, right?
We-
Right, we're, we're waiting to see with fingers crossed.
Yeah, and I'm curious, yeah, that's-
I would be curious because I don't, I would tend to agree with Matt's opinion. I don't think it would be very favorably received by landlords.
Yeah.
I think there could be, there needs to be maybe an education piece around it if you can, if you can connect with them, like through Megan or somebody who already has a connection to them. Because what you need to understand is that the Hess folks are not coming in, they're not reporters, they're not going to say, oh, you know, this is not up to code, that's, they're not going to do any of that. They're just going to come in and do the fixes that need fixing. And that's the end of it.
Right, but I do think, I, I just think that from a perspective of a landlord versus, you know, a tenant. So I have had these services done in units before and I will be completely 100% transparent and honest. If they come in with another, God bless, a can of spray foam, I'm just going to throw it out the window. Because spray foam is not the answer. And that's what a lot of these guys are coming in and doing. I, I don't know if it's just, I don't know what program it is, but I, I do know that they come in, they have the sealant, they have the tape, they have the doors and the, you know, they do the doors and the windows.
But that's the first step. It's called air sealing and it does, believe it or not, make a, a big difference. As we said, like they're, on average, you know, they, they have the calculations because they do the blower door test- As we said, like they're on average, you know, they they have the calculations because they do the blower door test. So it's a reduction basically of about thirteen hundred pounds of the CO2 emissions. But you know, that's a first step, right? It's not gonna solve everything. If you don't have decent windows, right? You need decent windows. If you don't have insulation, it can't fix all of that, but.
No, I understand.
Big difference.
I just.
And.
Between landlords and renters. So I think if a mailing is done, at least for Bethel, maybe other areas. I think if a mailing is done for Bethel, it can target the low-income housing of people who. Maybe are owning at a lower income or just those people. I think when you start to get landlords and renters, there's a lot of disconnect there. I don't think.
There definitely has to be some conversations, but um. Basically, like we said, if if over half of the renters are income-eligible, the whole. Um, building will receive the the income-eligible things. So that means that a landlord could get their entire place insulated probably at no cost. And I I don't know why you wouldn't want that, but.
Uh, you're saying that they'll insulate or they will air gap?
The the air sealing is the first step, right? The first step is a Hess. Then if they look at the building, like when they looked at my house, so think of an older home, right? If you if your house was built past two thousands, you're probably not really gonna need insulation much. But I had a nineteen fifty-four home. And when they looked, of course, there wasn't enough in the attic, but there was literally no insulation in the walls. And there was none in the basement. So um if they found that in like a landlord's property and the tenants were income-eligible. If that insulation needed to be done, so they find that in the Hess procedure, they're looking at whether there's proper insulation. And that would be the next step. And so if the folks were income-eligible. And the whole building became income-eligible, chances are they would do that insulation at no cost.
Yeah, and so let let me just sort of re-retrace the steps there. As Deb is saying that the Hess is uh an assessment. And they do on, you know, there's the spray foam and the door guards and stuff that is doesn't appear to be very much. But if if you're leaky, it does do a big uh service. But then they they leave you essentially with a series of next steps and and rebates and coup- in effect coupons for very. Reduced services. So if you if it turns out your whole four uh apartments are income-eligible. Or two of the four are income-eligible, then you can essentially get insulation for free. You can get heavily discounted uh energy-efficient appliances. And even if you're not income-eligible, the 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 rebates are are still substantial. So it's.
Yeah, it's a dollar seventy per square foot. So you're talking like over sixty, seventy percent of the cost of insulation. Is covered by the rebate.
And again, I apologize. I'm not arguing about the overall benefits of the program. I just think that there is. You're saying that they're left with rebates and coupons. Well, if you're going to the renters. Then they're having those rebates and coupons and that conversation is not happening with the landlord.
So.
Right, they're not, they're not gonna call the landlord and and tell them about.
Yeah, they have to get landlord approval. They they couldn't do it without that. So they do work with the landlord.
So I what what I'd like to see, I mean, I think this is, I mean, it's a good next step. But since you've you've started the this reaching out to in West Hartford. I'd like to see, I mean, I think it would make sense for us if if we're gonna do something like this to see what what the response is.
Yeah, and let me just say one thing that I think we really have something backwards is. The letter that we sent out in West Hartford was directly to the landlords.
Okay.
We didn't send it, we sent it to the building owner, not the tenants. I think that's, I see the problem you're kind, if we send it to tenants, it's it's a disconnect, so.
Yeah, I agree with with Diana. There is a disconnect.
Yeah, so we put the landlord in the driver's seat. We just give them knowledge about a program. That if they follow through on it, they would knock on the door of their tenants and say, hey, I'd like to do this. It'll make you more comfortable. And it could improve the building. And so the tenant could end, I mean, the landlord could end up with an insulated building or a new boiler or a new furnace. Uh, or heavily discounted.
So what was the objection? Like Matt didn't like the idea? Did he tell you why?
Oh, yeah, he didn't. No, he didn't give a a reason why.
No, I'm sure he had some experience.
I mean, Matt, I'm sure Matt had a reason. It was a pretty valid one.
No, I'm I'm sure also, but it would be nice to know what his reason was. Because what's being presented here is kind of a a win-win for the landlord.
Well, right, so I I that's why I wanna see what the what the data shows with West Hartford. Um, if for this program. If you don't mind sharing that, that'd be really helpful.
And.
Yeah, I think Matt's concern was he thought the letters were going to the tenants, not the landlord.
I see. That would explain it.
Oh.
Yeah.
That I could understand. I could understand that.
And it is also a very touchy subject in the town when you talk about affordable housing. Depending on your audience. So a- and there is a lack of knowledge and education around. Low-income affordable housing, what that means to everybody, who qualifies, who doesn't qualify. Um, and again, that's, I mean, it's a lot of small towns too, but it's just amount, it's it's just. Making sure that people understand really what it is. And that there are very specific guidelines that have to be followed by the state to be considered affordable housing. Or low-income.
I'll just make one suggestion is if if there's an interest, so we can certainly follow up as as the West Hartford, I'll call it experiment unfolds. So you can benefit from whatever we run into. And the other thing I would say is maybe down the road. Uh, uh, maybe a subcommittee of you would like to meet with Stephanie from New England Smart Energy. And she 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 leads up the whole company, so she could talk about her experience and you could hear it. From the person that would be coming, that would be sending the crew into the into the process.
There's that. And then also Devon Williamson from EverSource, EverSource. Is uh very willing to talk to folks about their programs. So, you know, they could answer any of your questions about any of their programs. So Hess and H I E are this one program. There's a Small Business Administration program, so you know, down the road you might wanna tackle that. There's a multifamily one and so forth, so um they're obviously very knowledgeable about their own programs. So they could tell you what what they've experienced. But um, yeah, so we're happy to answer questions in the future. We know you have a lot on your agenda tonight. So we just wanna leave you with other ways that um you can partner with us as you uh continue down your path um here. So um one thing that Pace does is we will do a a no-cost based on energy assessment for the town. So um that can lead into helping you create an energy plan for your town as well. And we know you've already taken a lot of steps. We've got the solar on the landfill and all of that. So you've got some really great things you've already done, but we know you wanna continue with that. And um again, we we noted how this connects to Sustainable C T, so um seven-one and seven-seven. So um we can help you with those things. We also have a handbook that you can download from our website. We put the link here. And um discover other ways that that um we can help you in your journey. So just some things to think about.
If I could add one thing to what Deb just said. I as talking to Bill, you've done so much at the municipal level. And if Bethel was like West Hartford, the municipality, you know, the schools in the town are about five percent of the overall community's energy consumption. So when Deb is is referring to a baseline townwide energy, that's the municipal operations. But then take and focus on residents, business, and the municipality. So it's all of Bethel is in that energy assessment. It's a it's a pretty cool thing. It takes your electric consumption, your natural gas consumption, your delivered fuels. Your vehicle roster, how many ice, how many internal combustion, how many uh PHEVs and. Battery electric vehicles you have and sort of puts it all into a plan. And it's it's a it's an interesting thing.
Okay, and Catherine has a copy of this slideshow as does Bill. Bill, I just sent you this in the email. So um, you know, it has the resources. If you have any questions, we're always here for you. Uh, Bill certainly knows how to reach us.
Talked about a heat pump a lot. And I I understand, for example, water heaters and so forth. You can go, you can switch to heat pumps. Is that only, are there programs for all the residents of Bethel, whether, no matter what their income is?
Oh, yeah, there's rebates on um for heat pumps, um hot water heat pumps. And then, you know, air source and ground source heat pumps through the state. And then the IRA, the federal funding is coming down too, and there's tax credits.
Yeah, I I read also that old refrigerators are very poor energy.
Yeah, anything over ten years, they're saying.
Right, so again, i- is does this apply to all residents?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Mm-hmm, yeah, it is. It's not as big a discount a- as you would receive if you were income-eligible.
How would they get that discount?
So.
Uh, the first step is a Hess to get the Hess and then um you're eligible for these different rebates and incentives.
Right, the whole the whole energy.
But even if somebody's income is three hundred thousand dollars, they can get it.
Correct.
I see. No, I I my mindset was that it was all geared to low.
No, no, anybody can get it to.
I see, okay.
Because the idea is that we're gonna be reducing carbon emissions.
Right.
And 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 benefiting the planet.
Okay, good, I got it now.
In general.
Can I pick up just on that? I'm glad you brought up the refrigerator because. They they do this. I know it's easy to trivialize kind of what they do with the spray foam, cause it doesn't look like much, but like I've had a a couple of these done. And I'm not income-eligible, but they come in and they inventory all of your appliances. So if you have a freezer, if you have a refrigerator, if you have a microwave, whatever your your stove top is. They they really go through all your appliances, your air conditioner, if you have, you know, outside air conditioner, they inventory your appliances. And if you can remember when you got them, they essentially do kind of like Deb said, oh, if you have a refrigerator and it's more than ten or fifteen years old. You can probably cut your energy use. And actually, it's not much of a discount. My recollection is you got a two hundred dollar uh off of a new refrigerator.
That's not terrible.
No, no, it's better than a stick in the eye. And uh. And I.
But EverSource will also pay you to haul off inefficient. They they bought my old freezer for sixty bucks and hauled it up.
See, I I this is the kind of thing I'm not sure in general people know. They may get the flyer sometimes with the bill, but first of all, a lot of people now are doing it online. And they don't get the flyer or they don't look at the flyer. And even if they get the flyer, then I don't know about you, but I tend not to look at flyers. I tend to open it, take the bill out, put it on a pile. So I think this is something we need a lot more public awareness that there are these opportunities. I think in in general today, the refrigerators don't last the way they used to. But I know people who have refrigerators that are thirty years old. That's way before we were in energy-saving mode.
Right, yeah, it's probably costing them a lot. It's gonna get more.
Thank you. Is there, are there any other questions for the Pace Heat Smart team right now? Um, I will send you the slide deck. They sent it to me. Um, and we can discuss later, you know, how and you know, how we will um partner in this way. But there are two um categories that we could definitely um. Um, in the Sustainable Connecticut um categories that would qualify under this program. So, and then. How we access that? Those funds are only used for this program. Are those the restrictions related to that?
Yeah, I think you would probably only be using it for Energize C T kinds of programs. I I think if you talk to Devon, like if you, Bernie, don't you think if they wanted to do like small business stuff or um. Uh, multifamilies or something like that within the Energize C T sphere, I think that would be an okay use of it.
There's a a whole raft. There there's Hess, which is for income, not income-eligible, H I E, which is for income-eligible. They're they're very similar, but the the richer benefits are for the income-eligible people. Then as Deb is saying. On the business side, there's small business energy advantage, and there's a lot of littler programs like. Um, or if you're new construction and things like that, as long as you're advertising, in effect, their their suite of products. Which, by the way, you're already sort of paying for because they they funded out of your electric bill and your gas bill. Um, that that money can, as long as you're doing marketing an Energize Connecticut uh campaign.
Um, the criteria and what the funds can be used for? Or where do I get that?
Um, I would, I I think maybe we can, why don't why don't we do this? Why don't we talk to Devon and sort of get a list and we can do this?
That would be helpful. Okay. Be great.
Thank you.
Is there anybody, anybody else? Are we good? Okay. Sunny, Katie, Amy, are you guys fine? Okay.
I'm good, yeah, thank you. Good to see you, Deb and Bernie.
You too.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice night, everybody.
All right, have a good night.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
You good with that presentation for now? Great, anything else?
Sure.
All right, so the next thing on the agenda is related to the bylaws. Um, it's in your package. I'm not gonna talk much about that, other than you have it. I can send it to, well, you have it digitally already. Um, take a look at that. If there's any comments, let me know. We will be voting on that in November, okay?
How would you like comments or questions on the bylaws?
Just an email? Just send it to me in the email.
You sent this?
It it's in the packet, yeah.
It was what?
Oh, the original packet.
No.
It was attached. It was attached. It was attached.
It just went with the last with the last email.
Donna sent it. It's part of the package. It's in the PDF.
Oh, okay.
It's like attached to it.
Okay.
I can recall it if you.
Uh, yeah. Sometimes I'm not very good at.
Oh, really? She, Donna sent out the agenda?
Yeah.
But.
I saw that.
Okay, but that's in the same document.
Oh, okay, I should be able to.
So Katie, I mean, for now, we'll we'll get comments. Are you okay to update when, if we need to?
Um, sure.
Okay. For now. Yeah, if you, yeah, if you can highlight it on the document itself, so you know, she'll know where to, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I'm just, if it's a question, though.
Oh, it's a question, that's fine. Yeah, no, it's a, you know, email me. Yeah. Okay, that's fine. Um, okay, anything else on the bylaws? Nope. Um, strategic plan, um, I already went through that a little bit. What my thoughts were was to put something together for uh twenty twenty-three. I will try to draft that up um as best I can, what's in my head. Um, if you have something in the next week that you wanna let me know and I can add to it. I'm gonna basically put it on a grid with a schedule and um you can comment it and then we can talk about it next month. Does that make sense to all of you? You, Sunny, Katie, okay? That good?
Yeah, sounds good, Catherine. Did did you guys email the um? Sorry, the agenda, the strategic agenda from Katie? I don't see it in my mailbox.
You didn't get the agenda?
I have the agenda, but is there another document that Katie sent?
It's attached. Just scroll past the agenda.
It's like seven pages in the.
Okay, got it. Sorry, yeah, I missed that part.
Thanks a lot.
Yep, okay, let me, yeah, let me know soon later, like if you're not getting stuff, but yeah, it was part of the packet, the PDF. Okay.
Okay.
I resended you too.
Sounds good, yeah.
Okay, and then Sean, I want to kind of start putting stuff together and how we will communicate with the town and, you know, maybe work with Dawn and Mary on all of that. I mean, I'm gonna kind of leave it to you, cause you're like the Mr. Digital Guru person. Um, and so I'm gonna rely on you to put something together that I can look at. Um, and then I wanna go back to the chairman comments. Was was there anything that you guys wanted to talk about, anything that I said? Anything other, anything else?
Oh, okay. Volunteer volunteer stuff, so.
Okay.
I have to run, I'm sorry.
Okay, was there anything you wanted to talk about?
Yeah.
You sure?
Yeah. I'll send you an email.
Yeah, send me the email.
I told you that I met with the Stony Hill people.
Yeah.
I said a meeting.
Yeah, but we can't talk about that right now.
Okay, that's good.
I think this is, yes.
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, other than, this is special meeting, so there wasn't other business.
Got it, got it, got it.
It's like they have, you know, municipal government, love it, right? Lived it for forty years, so anyway.
All right, okay, thanks. Sorry.
Do you have to know if we have? Cause I I have my own Google Drive and putting documents in. Do we have our own town? We have a town, but I can never guess.
And I just wanna see if there's anything related and then.
Yeah, first.
So is there anything else related to the agenda? So again, what we wanna do eventually is the commissioners will be assigned, be liaisons with with a partner. So we can start kind of putting out those initiatives and getting ourselves together for the certification. Did anybody have comments about that approach?
You said that that's gonna be assigned after the first video.
Well, we can start, I I wanna start thinking about it now.
Okay.
Yeah, and I wanna solidify this. It it is starting probably by December, because we'll have a strategic plan, right? So those responsibilities are gonna have to be assigned.
Do you have like a list of the responsibilities?
I have a list of.
And you know where I am.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know, I know. I have a list of, right today, where we're at, you know, as far as um the partnerships go. But I, as we continue uh building partnerships and collaborations and connectivity, that's gonna expand, and that's where the volunteers are gonna come into play and all of that. So um, yes. So the short answer is yes. Um, so anybody have comments about that before we adjourn? Are you okay with everything, everybody, for now? Next month, we have the um Bethel Land Trust is coming to give a presentation. So, all right, so motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we can start.
I buy a ball, buy a ball and.
Wait, just.
So the meeting's over, right?
And we've.
Good night, everyone.